Okay, welcome to City Heights. There's a good start. Cleveland Heights City Council. It is September 16th, 2024. It's 7:41. Oops, we're a little late. Sorry about that. Eddie, would you call the roll?
Cobb.
Present.
Kuda.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Posh.
Here.
All right, no members to excuse, no amendments to the agenda. Approval of minutes for May 20th and September 9th. Anybody have any amendments to the... Oh, okay, so we're good there. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I wanted to announce that as of late last week, we finally got communication from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control approving and announcing their approval of the application for the Cedar Lee Dora. And I wanted to let council and the public know that we have received that approval of our application, and we are currently in production on the signs indicating the boundaries of the Dora, and we anticipate installing those signs in advance of the next large event that we anticipate there, the music hop. So looking forward to that, and we'll fill you in when those signs are being installed or once they've been installed. Now, second, I'd like to talk a little bit about arts in Cleveland Heights. On a personal level, I come from an artist. My mother's an artist. I live with artists. I am not one myself. Of course, you know, I have the privilege of having watched an artist grow from childhood to adulthood, providing... Bottom his first guitar, his first drum set, gave him his first bass guitar, and watched him grow as an artist in an environment that fertilized that, that allowed for that growth and development in Cleveland Heights. And it's with that in mind that I think about arts in Cleveland Heights. I have a very personal connection, even if it's not a direct connection as an artist myself. And so I know organizations like ours, government organizations in particular, have a really difficult time bringing artists to the table. Art is in everything. Design is in everything. Everything in our lives includes it, and yet we have a really, really difficult time bringing the people who create it to the table. And I know why. It's because we get very focused on particular things. And so I did want to recognize the advocacy that I saw from Councilman Petrus in the meeting immediately preceding this one. And I want to acknowledge that, Councilman Petrus, you know, fighting for, you know, the support of the arts community. And I hope that people recognize that being done in the spirit that it was in a true advocacy fashion. And even though I don't know myself what the perfect prescription is for this issue, I do know that even if there are sort of disparate opinions about how to move forward on this and the very specific, you know, pieces of the legislation or the timing or something like that, I do recognize that every single one of you does value and recognize the importance of art in our city and in our lives. And so I just wanted to reflect on that for a moment. I know me and my role and council as well, we don't have a direct role in determining what the library board does or what arts organizations do. But I recognize the advocacy here as a method for making a voice heard and for suggesting a path forward. And so as the mayor of this city, I did want to bring up another piece of communication that we all got earlier today from a former library board member, former school board member, Mr. Silverman, sent us all an email. And I'm not going to read through it. It is a very long email that provides a bit of history of the building, and so I don't want to read the whole email. But there were some points that he mentioned, not terribly flattering points related to me, but I think they are important points nonetheless. And so I think one of the things that Mr. Silverman mentioned was sort of maybe a warning or a caution for us to be careful about telling the library board or weighing in on the decisions of the library board about the fate of their assets. And then he lists quite a few of the problems that we currently face with our own facilities and those problems that have not been fixed just yet. And I did want to reflect on that point and recognize as well that, yes, there are city facilities that we have not corrected problems with yet, that we are working very hard to do so. He mentions the Taylor Tudor buildings. He mentions the main theater at Kane Park. He mentions Coventry Garage and the elevators. And these are all things that keep me up at night and issues that, as an administration, we focus on very, very heavily. He mentions quite a few things that thus far we haven't succeeded at. And I do want to make the point that he's right. He's right. That should be our primary focus. Our primary focus needs to be sort of the assets that we currently have responsibility for and focusing our efforts on those things. I think where Mr. Silverman and I might diverge a bit is, again, the appreciation for the advocacy from Councilman Petrus and other members of the council as well who are advocating on behalf of arts in our community and, you know, maintaining a space, a home for arts here in Cleveland Heights. And again, I don't know the perfect prescription. I know the council is going to be debating the exact form of any communication that they have with the library board. But I did want to at least express my appreciation for the advocacy and for the dedication to supporting arts generally. And I also wanted to recognize that in a practical way. The other perspective that some might float in this space and in this discourse related to our place in this discussion that, yes, our primary focus needs to be maintaining our facilities, paving our streets, doing those things better and better each day. But I also wanted to include and express my appreciation for the advocacy that I saw earlier. And I hope that however this is resolved, that it is resolved in a way that does protect a home for the arts in Cleveland Heights generally and that we all walk away from the table. And I don't know if we have a place at that table, but that all of the people walk away from the table feeling like we have done something good for this city. And with that, I close. Thank you.
All right, thank you, mayor. Communication from the city administrator. No report? All right. And there are no department reports. Do we have a report from the clerk of council?
Just to notify council that an application has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D-5 permit for Whiz Bank Theater located at 2134 Lee Road. This matter will be referred to the mayor and chief of police. Thank you.
Wonderful. So now, public comment. Here you are again. We're glad to see you. So you have three minutes. There's 19 speakers, so anybody who can condense a little, you know, will smile on that. But let's keep going.
Adam Fleischer.
A man of few words.
Everybody, Adam Fleischer, 2944 Coleridge. I'll keep this short. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for your support of the Cleveland Heights Happy 5K, 10K, and One Mile Family Run. As you know, it's coming up October 6th. It's an amazing, amazing event in Cleveland Heights. We've raised over $70,000, actually over $80,000 as of today for the Cleveland Heights Youth Scholarship Fund, which goes directly to the children in our community. It's a city run. For the first time in eight years, the city has agreed to close a street off for programming from 12:00 to 8:00 or 12:00 to 3:00 for an additional three hours, which is fantastic. It's an opportunity to grow the run, bring more value to the city, and an opportunity to show our city for what it is. Unfortunately, we have no budget for the programming for the post-race party, so we're asking for a budget of not to exceed $5,000 just to put together some fun programming for the children for a family event on October 6th. So we hope you support it, and we hope you vote for it. Thank you very much.
My name's Lou Radovoyevich. I'm on Middlehurst. I'm also on the committee for the Happy 5K. Again, I'm in support of it. Basically, I'm here to ask for your help. It's not easy to raise money as a volunteer to try and get sponsors. And this is the first year that we've got the street shut down for three hours. You know, it's the first time we'll have the Dora open, and it's really the opportunity for our city to shine. So I need you to help us to bring out the happy side of the 5K and the fun part of the run. That's it.
Good evening, Mayor San. Sharon, thank you so much for your remarks tonight. They're very, very well placed and well received. Thank you. President Kuda and the members of city council. I'm Judith Rider, 3025 Lincoln Boulevard. And I really want to say that we in Cleveland Heights are grateful for and value the work of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Library System and all that they provide. It is remarkable. We are also, of course, as you would understand, extremely grateful for the arts community that we are. And we encourage you all, as the strong leadership of the city, to note that there is overwhelming evidence that Cleveland Heights community residents want the Coventry Peace Building to remain in place as a community arts center with oversight transferred from the library to the capable, experienced hands of Coventry Peace and tenants and to vote in favor of this change. Thank you very much.
I'm Jennifer Winter, speaking along with Paul.
Good evening, Paul Volpe. I'm a very concerned resident and an involved citizen of Cleveland Heights. I'm going to just read this as a thematic beginning to what I'm going to talk about so you understand that there's true sincerity in what I'm going to say. And I am speaking for myself and Jen here today. We need to understand the past to try and discover who we are as people, as public officials, as a community that prides itself on public discourse, exchange of ideas, optimism and vision. That's why I moved to Cleveland Heights eight years ago. Time is important. Understand that on May 5th, 2017, the city had written up and was going to send out an RFP for developers to build housing, probably big apartment buildings, on this property. I don't know if everybody knows that. It was ready to go. We found out through a spy that that was happening. And the community of us at the school got together. And on May 10th, the school board issued to discuss it. We got together on May 10th, 2017, six years ago. And that same day, a release was put out by the school board saying that our lease ends at the end of June. We will all, we and all other tenants in the building will not be able to renew our leases. We will be able to rent our space month to month until a buyer is found. They all got notices. On July 17th, we went to the city. Help us, please. This is important, six years ago, okay? We wrote a memo to the city. I won't read it. But the city agreed that we could have a public forum in the community center to discuss this. Let the public know what was going on. And of course, we were busy, busy, busy trying to respond to this as a creative community of artists, educators, and people of real responsibility and concern. We got the city through Tanisha Brierley, the then-city manager, to hold up on the RFP till September 11th, 2017. This is unfolding quickly. We were working frantically, and one of the things we did was we redefined this place from being the Coventry Peace Park to the Coventry Peace Campus. That name didn't exist till then. And you all know what a campus is. You went to college. The campus is a configuration of building spaces, uses, that together create a very special environment. That's what we had here. That's what we had here. Nobody else had anything like that, okay? And it worked. Okay, so we held the public forum. People came out. They celebrated it. We were not allowed to make a full presentation. We were able to come up and talk about it. We weren't able to show our planning and our work because we put together a master plan. Okay, but on August 9th, I got my first chance really to meet our library director, Nancy Levin. I hold the library, and at the time, I held the library director in very high regard. And please understand that my comments, albeit personal, are real. They all came from emails, many emails, from the website of the library. I'm supposed to get six minutes? Yeah, I got another three minutes.
I'm sorry. So Jen, you're yielding your time? Okay, so start the next three, I guess, then.
Okay. Quickly, we met with Nancy. She agreed it was highly productive. Thank you, Nancy. She said, "On September 7th, your presentation was powerful, inspiring, and hit all the conceptual points." On September 29th, she said, "I'm working on a resolution of support and of the urging of the school board, library, and city to work together to offer financial, administrative, grant writing, and other tools at our disposal to fulfill your vision." Okay? We went to council, asked council what they thought. Four council people said, "We support this." Two were silent, and one was in opposition, okay? But we were doing things correctly. All right. Three years later, with that optimism, that sense of hope and pride and belief that something could be worked out, exactly what you want to do now, what you talked about today, let's talk about it. Nobody talked about it. It just, we just got dumped on. And what happened? Three years later, all vision and discourse disappeared. Our library director sort of disappeared as well. And we had nothing but lease negotiations and discussions on a park. That was it. It was all about the park and the lease. And the lease did not go well. It took three years before the leases were signed. Can you imagine the anxiety that these people went through? Three years. And it's real, and it's all in writing, okay? And then, on February 14th, the leases were signed. A $1.2 million park plan was announced. And yes, there was some public interaction. But the truth is, it had... Everything that related to the campus was deleted from that conversation. I was there. I was involved. I listened, and I read this website two times. On July 7th, 2024, a $3.2 million park breaks ground, $2 million more than the original budget. So it's six years later. I know the library board is frustrated. If you read their minutes, their minutes talk about things. Well, I don't care if they hate me. I just want to do the right thing. I want to read what one of the library board members said, which, if I interpreted it right, I like. It says, "What I concern myself with is what I came here and sat here for, which is to serve the people of Cleveland Heights, University Heights, as a good representative, doing good library-type things. That's what I concern myself with." Okay. How did this get so bad? Why can't we work together? Why can't we sit around the table and solve this? Why? Yeah.
Thank you.
It defies logic that this city council is investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in the city to revitalize Coventry Village, and the library wants to destroy countless businesses and eliminate over 100 jobs.
Fikas Tarakia. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
Council. I am Fikas Tarakia, the board president of Heights Library Board. As a member of the library's board trustees, I have spent over six years directly involved with the Coventry School and its current tenant issues. While I understand the hope Coventry Peace Campus representatives have conveyed to you about their ability to manage and maintain the old Coventry School, hope does not equate to a solid business plan or fiscal reality. I've heard many claims from CPC representatives that remain unsubstantiated and, in some cases, contradict the reality of their own financial records. As you weigh your involvement, I have to wonder if councils reviewed those financial records. Are you basing your decisions on the documented financial reality of these nonprofits? When I look at the numbers, it's clear to me that handing over control of the building to CPC is an untenable risk. What data are you seeing that could lead you to think that CPC is in any way equipped to handle the long-term demands of this aging property? We have a clear picture of what upcoming expenses for the old Coventry School look like. $2.8 million, as documented in the capital needs assessment conducted in March 2024 by Cresco Playhouse Square Management. The detailed report offers estimates put together in consultation with relevant providers of needed services. CPC has offered their own repair estimate of $1.25 million, but they've provided no concrete details, no sourcing, and have admitted that they were still in the midst of getting engineering studies done when that number was given. CPC has also stated that they are sure they can fund repairs through debt, though no loan applications have been approved yet, and by receiving grants that have yet to be applied for and have no guarantee of being given. They claim they can bring in new tenants when a professional management company could not. Even below-market rent subsidized by the library hasn't been enough to attract tenants to a deteriorating building with an unappealing, outmoded design. CPC has even proposed that we simply give them a chance to run things, but based on their financial history, such a move would be reckless, especially in light of two recent building facade collapses in our city. Coventry School has significant documented maintenance issues, including a deteriorating roof. What risk would we be taking by allowing the property to fall further into neglect if CPC can't follow through? I'm not willing to risk a similar incident at a property adjacent to the soon-to-be renovated park and playground. With all this in mind, I ask council, why are you offering emotional and vocal support without addressing the core problems we've outlined? Does that support come with a standing financial commitment to tackle the building's deep-rooted issues? And maybe most importantly, if council's going to choose to get involved in this situation, meet with us. Meet with the library board. We have been open to working with the city to find a solution to this issue, but have yet to be approached. Thank you.
Cleveland Heights City Council members, my name is Annette Uemoto. I'm a trustee of the library. I last addressed this body on June 3rd. At that time, I shared that over the next six months, the library board would determine viable options for the use of the Coventry School building. Over the past 105 days since I made those remarks, that is exactly what the library administration and the board has been doing. After watching the September 3rd council committee of the whole and city council meeting, it was apparent that city council members were engaging with Coventry Peace Campus, but not with the library board. So after the library board held our committee meetings on September 9th, I shared with you via email that we had just discussed several options for the building's future. I shared that as a board member, it's my responsibility to prioritize library funding for library services and to be a responsible steward of public property. After reading a News 5 article and reflecting on two facade collapses in our city, I wrote to you again outlining one example using the roof as to why I find it challenging to consider proposals that would result in Coventry Peace, Inc. managing the building. I love the vision of Coventry Peace, Inc., but the library must prioritize spending tax dollars on library staff, library projects, and library programs that benefit the entire community. In addition, it would be reckless to hand over the keys to someone who does not demonstrate a financial plan for the building's operating and capital needs. As posted last week, Resolution Number 181-2024 encourages Heights libraries to transfer ownership of the Coventry School building to Coventry Peace, Inc. This is an entity that on its most recent tax Form 990 reported net assets of $15,366. I urge you to consider what exactly you are asking the library board to do. What resources, financial or otherwise, are you willing to provide this year and in the future along with your words of encouragement in order to achieve the outcome that you are advocating for? In the past, the library tried to work with the tenants to support their vision. Then, just as today, we cannot rely on vague financial plans in the stewardship of this building. Transferring ownership and hoping it all works out is not responsible. It is difficult to condense six years of experience with the Coventry Peace Building and its tenants into three minutes. I am more than willing to find time to get into the details. I have all of my notes from my tenure on the library to bring with me. Please consider additional conversation with the library as we are still in our decision-making process. Thank you.
So this feels a little bit like a debate. But I don't think it should be, and I really wish things... I really wish things had happened differently in terms of the communication among our groups because I've learned more in the last week than I've known in two years about the thinking of the library board. So if we learn anything from this, it's that we need to work more closely together. We need to communicate more clearly with each other. Because I think a lot of cities might say, if there was a group that was willing to volunteer with a bunch of professionals working pro bono to put together an arts and education and culture hub, they would be thrilled. So I see that there are three issues. There's the building condition. There's funding. And then there's the organizational capacity. So the building condition, I was with an engineer who walked through the building with me today. His name is John Lan. He's from University Heights. And he said, "The condition of the building from his perspective is good." And that I'm going to be meeting with another engineer on Thursday and a third on Friday to assess specific issues in the building just so that we have a clear picture of exactly what's happening with the condition of the building because we're not seeing what the library was seeing as conditions that need remediation. So one thing that's included is they say that, you know, there's concern about the facade falling. Well, we don't have concrete cornices, and we don't have signs hanging over walkways. And in their report, the facade was said to be in very good condition. So I don't think there's a concern for that. Funding for operations will come from rent revenues. We have funding for operations and minor repairs from rent revenues that will only increase as we continue to fill the building. Major repairs will be done with a capital campaign. Just like the library is not using their operating dollars to fund the park, a major renovation or remodeling, they are using a capital campaign to do that work. So that's why I filed the 990 for Coventry Peace as the board president, and that dollar figure is exactly appropriate for our current operations. We coordinate four events a year, and that budget covers it. We write grants, and we see... four events a year, and that budget covers it. We write grants and receive grants every year for that, but if we are managing and operating the building as we did in 2021, we will have site control and be able to write grants. Grants can't be written in advance. You have to specify, how are you going to use these funds? We don't have site control to use these funds. And then the organizational capacity that we have is incredible. We have 12 organizations with staff, boards of directors, volunteers, donors, recipients of our services. We have talked with so many local professionals who are willing to help us pro bono. Organizational capacity, we have an overflow of that. So, thank you for hearing this. We're happy that the rest of the city will hear it, because this does affect the community, and I look forward to it. And I'm happy to hear the library board saying, please invite us to speak to the council, because we do have, we have an updated financial forecast, and we have a lot of information. So, thank you. Oh, and we have these documents of our proposal that are available. These were all emailed to you if you receive them. I have more copies for the community. They're also emailed to the library board. Anybody?
Fern Hart.
Hello, everyone. My name is Fern Hart. I'm a resident of Cleveland Heights and a resident artist at Artful in the Coventry Peace Campus. I'd like to start off my comments by saying that I'm really surprised and honestly a little bit appalled at the tone being taken from library board members who are coming to speak this evening, because all of us from the dozen organizations in that building who have been coming to speak to you for months have been prefacing all of our statements by saying how much we love and support our local library system and look forward deeply to their future success. I don't see the same kind of respect being returned to these organizations that are doing really important work for their local community. I would also say that the issue of funding has been brought up many times by the library board, saying that Coventry Peace is not able to get together that funding, that they don't have loans, they don't have grants, and the board has been told time and time again that in order to get those things, you have to have long-term commitment from your landlord or site control and ownership of the building. You cannot even apply for those things without that. So, that is the logical reason that they cannot receive those things. I wanted to speak to you today, counsel, to thank you first for your words of support and for the resolution that you've put together. I also hope you understand the possible urgency of this matter, as despite the fact that their own online poll and community listening session showed that the public does not want the organizations removed and the building demolished, that possibility is still taking up much discussion in the library board meetings. I have much respect for my local library system and the people who work there, and I hope the library will do what their community has been incredibly clear that they want and take steps to transfer the building to Coventry Peace. Coventry Peace has shown the capability to secure funding for improvements to the building if they are given ownership of the space. This is not a dilapidated building, as the library has been stating, and the community supports the future success of this building. Mayor Sarin, I know that you're a supporter of the arts here in Cleveland Heights. I'm constantly seeing you sharing information about concerts and music events throughout the city, especially at Kane Park, and I can tell you that it would mean a lot to the thousands of citizens who would be affected by the closure and demolishing of this ADA-accessible arts building to receive public support from you for the Keep the Peace Initiative. Our city is a self-described home for the arts and needs to back up that statement in concrete ways and show support for these dozen organizations who provide arts, culture, and education services to many of your citizens. This building is an important pillar to both the future success of the Coventry District and the arts community in CH as a whole, and it's a space many cities can only dream of having. Thank you.
Amy Rosenbluth.
Good evening, Mayor Sarin and members of city council. My name is Amy Rosenbluth. I am a 27-year resident of Cleveland Heights. I moved here intentionally from San Francisco because of the arts-based, community-based. I raised my two children, and I started a nonprofit organization that is currently located in the Coventry Peace Campus. And I want to say that I'm grateful to the residents of the city and to those who've worked for the city over the past 14 years that have enabled me personally to take root and flourish, growing a family and also a business that has served more than 10,000 youth over the last 14 years. We are in our 14th year providing creative expression programming to kids and schools throughout greater Cleveland. Many of those kids' families and schools are from our hometown. We're currently in three elementary schools in Cleveland Heights, two middle schools, and the high school. I want to thank the members, you current members of city council, for being supportive of the Peace Campus and all that we stand for. Lake Erie, Inc. was born and grew up in the Coventry neighborhood, like many of us, connected not only to the folks who came to us but to the businesses. We have active working relationships with the library, with Maxbacks, with Tommies, with Made Cleveland, with the Grog Shop, with many other businesses. I've talked about this before, where we send the kids in to talk to the owners, to talk to the business, people going into the businesses, to learn how to interview, to put the information together and do presentations. We have connected kids to their own neighborhood, and we have connected neighborhood businesses to kids, and that does not happen very often. We have become a well-known, well-respected arts and education center. Coventry has helped define Lake Erie, Inc., and also, very importantly, Lake Erie, Inc. has defined Coventry to many people. We have families who drive in from Painesville, from Parma, from Hudson, even from our neighbors, Warrensville Heights and East Cleveland, and they drive in to our neighborhood, and they drop their children off, and they trust that they will be safe and inspired and encouraged to grow and learn, and then they go down to Coventry and they buy Tommy's milkshakes, and they visit the bookstore, and they see that Cleveland Heights is not a scary, strange place. It is a place where they belong also. Like all of the tenants in the Peace Campus building, we fill a unique set of needs in our community, and many of us are the only ones doing what we do. And what a special thing that has been for the Coventry neighborhood and for the Cleveland Heights community as a whole. A collection of creative, supportive, community-driven organizations sharing inspiration, and we are housed under one roof. In closing, I truly, truly appreciate you bringing this resolution forward. I hope that you all will vote in favor of it. I have been lucky myself to have found a community I love within a community I love, and I hope that this can survive and thrive with your support. Thank you.
Deidra McPherson.
Good evening, Mayor Sarin, members of city council, and fellow residents of Cleveland Heights. I'm Deidra McPherson. I'm a resident of the Coventry Village neighborhood, and I'm also an arts and cultural nonprofit. I've been working in the industry for over 15 years, and I'm here this evening just to speak to the importance of city support of arts and culture. Mayor Sarin, you expressed so brilliantly, you know, your personal connection to the arts, and I believe all of you see how important it is to the thriveability of Cleveland Heights. However, I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, we're hearing two different, several different perspectives, and at Assembly for the Arts, you know, we are our region's arts council. We serve the entire county. This conversation is incredibly important to us. While our efforts have been really rooted in Cleveland as a product of Cleveland Heights, I have to speak up and in favor of retaining this building for artists and arts organizations. Doing so is a, it represents a major investment in arts and culture, and I think that the city does play an important role. We've seen this in other parts of the country. We've seen this in cities like Minneapolis, cities like Austin, where they've put city dollars behind supporting arts and culture and making it affordable for arts organizations and artists, entrepreneurs, like Amy Rosenbluth of Lake Erie, Inc. She's created jobs. She's attracted people, her organization has attracted people from all across our region to spend money and spend time in the city of Cleveland Heights. How do we amplify that, and how do we do that in a way that creates a cultural plan for Cleveland Heights and even adjacent University Heights? But how do we do that in a way that really takes our city forward? And I think that one of the reasons why we're seeing residents fight so hard for the building is because finding affordable space is so dire. It's difficult to come by, and so by the city having more investment in the arts, that would help alleviate some of that and create this more neutrality. You know, the library and this campus is part of the arts as well. I mean, we're talking about all forms of arts and culture, and we should really be working together rather than in opposition of one another to advance a collective vision. And so, I wanted to offer myself, others in the arts and cultural administrative community who do advocacy on a day-to-day basis, please lean on us to help with these conversations. I'm a violinist. I'm also an MBA, and so I'm happy to write that business plan, support my peers, my colleagues. We have the skills to bring this together within the brilliant people just in this room, and there's so many others who support what we're trying to do, and so I thank you for listening.
Lee Chilko.
Lee Chilko, 2322 Delamere Drive. I attended the meeting on September 9, and the portion of the meeting that was devoted to Coventry Peace was held at just before 8 o'clock. We had made an offer on September 8 to the board. It was given fairly short shrift. The plan that has been distributed today sets forth our offer, and everyone in this room has a copy of that or has it available to them. We're as interested in discussion as anyone. What I heard on September 9 was a board that was going to make a decision on September 23 by going into executive session, passing a resolution not to sell the building, coming out of that meeting, and proposing to explore demolition. It was pretty obvious to me what was going on. We've made an offer, and I want to support the offer, and ask that strong public support be given to it and strong city council support be given to it. We're only asking that the building be transferred. We're leaving the land with the library. They got it for $1. They have land worth 5.9 acres worth $2 million at the end of our transaction. We only have the building. We'll acquire it by our rights with necessary easements for parking and so forth. Coventry Peace, in my judgment, has very strong financial management. Had they operated the building in '23, my projections are that they would have had $250,000 revenue, $75,000 surplus, and $25,000 left for the library. Coventry Peace is uniquely qualified with respect to grants. The library does not have the power to seek the kind of grants that we can take. These are only allocated to nonprofits. Coventry Building is a critical part of our community. We all know that. Arts has produced 100 jobs and almost services to 20,000 people. And the final point I'll make is that the demolition of the building would leave a significant void in Coventry Village, in our community, and there's no way that green space is going to create economic value for our community. So, Vivek, I ask you to delay your meeting on the 23 and meet with city council and give this a chance.
Patty Carlisle.
Over my four years as a library trustee, many attempts to realize a Coventry vision have been negotiated and eventually exhausted. Recently, the library board was pushed to approach the city, but also warned that the city didn't want to get involved in library business. CPC approached the city anyway and invited public pressure, asking council to reach out to library staff and board members individually, though even after this plea, I heard nothing from residents, tenants, or council members. In the hours before this meeting and that very proposal out there, CPC has insisted that elected officials must be involved in the library's decision. So, let's talk about some of the facts that we are weighing. $2.8 million for capital improvement is too high, is what we keep hearing, and 1.25 is a closer number, but it's still an unvetted one. Does it matter, though, if capital improvement funds aren't available in any amount? What billion are we talking about? Abandoning the nonprofit clause is actually worse, and no longer requiring tenants to show operational solvency is something CPC seems to advocate for. They did it in the Committee of the Hole. This invites financial disaster. It's a worrisome oversight. The moment for-profit businesses sign a lease in that building, the building becomes subject to Cleveland Heights property taxes. With an appraised value of $3 million, the building's tax burden in 2024 would have been $112,000. So, you've been invited to this process, and good news is there are some things that cities do. So, it's appropriate to note that the largest share of survey respondents did want the cities to get involved financially. Successful arts and culture centers in the region are often city-administered, and standout examples begin investing in their cultural centers 40 years ago, which is the one downside. We don't have time on our side here. Through income taxes, recreational levies, or well-diversified funding plans. CPC spokesperson insists that an unelected body making city planning decisions about community assets is inappropriate. I wonder, is a private group with specific interests more qualified to make planning decisions that impact the entire community? Does council feel confident that the residents would pass a culture and arts levy in the Heights? If not, I doubt the library would have better luck. So, maybe it's about whose voices matter. That same CPC proposal opines the only way for the library to understand the community is what the community truly wants is to listen to those who have engaged, the people who have responded to the survey, attended public listening sessions, and participated in boards meetings. Respectfully, no. We can't focus our efforts on one group of people, serve only that group of people, make decisions based on one group of people. The Coventry Engaged Group is a small cohort in a community of 60,000. We cannot shrink our view to one vocal minority. Most of the community we serve won't ever engage with us or participate in that way, and they don't have to. The library is here for them whether they use it or not. That is what a public good is. Thank you.
That's it for legislative comments. Next up for General David Clean.
Hi, I'm David Clean. I live in Cleveland Heights. The comment and the suggestion that I'd like to make is that we, you place on the agenda for consideration a safe and legal pedestrian crosswalk at the top of Cedar Hill between Overlook and Harcourt, which is also the terminus or the beginning of the Ohio Clean Trail. That's it. Can we do that? I would, if you will place it on the agenda, then I would attempt to persuade you that it's a great idea. Can I hear from you in the future?
Well, would that go to, I'm sorry, let me just, whose committee would that go to? Is that something you go to?
Safety Committee to know.
Or Safety Committee, yeah.
Not tomorrow.
But I guess he's asking, would you be willing to put that on your agenda?
I would love to talk to you about it and...
My name?
Do you have my name, phone number?
I got it. Yep.
Please do. Thank you all.
Harley Rubin.
Hi, everyone. Sorry I didn't print this out, so I'll be reading from my little laptop here. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Harley Rubin. I use he/him pronouns. My address is 2768 Lancashire Road in Coventry Village. I'm a transgender, gender, queer person, a registered voter in Cleveland Heights, a healthcare social worker, and a board member of Trans Ohio. I want to say early on, in case I run out of time, that I'm holding a trans rights testimony workshop at Ryson House next week, the 24th, from 7 to 8:30 p.m., and I would love to invite all my passionate neighbors who are here today. Also, parts of my testimony have been pulled from the state testimony that I wrote opposing HB 68 and HB 8, which are publicly available online. I also have citations for everything I'm about to say, should anyone want them. Anti-trans legislation is sweeping the country, including Ohio, and extremist politicians are ruthlessly dehumanizing and attacking my community. While the current focus is on trans youth, legislators in Ohio will not stop with youth in school settings. In January this year, Representative Gary Click admitted on video... In January this year, Representative Gary Click admitted on video that the end game of this legislative campaign is to ban gender-affirming care for everyone. That includes me and so many people I love. While I know that the council has passed Resolution Number 19 this year, proposed by Jim Petrus, it only condemns it to HB68 and does not prevent its impact in Cleveland Heights or the impact of any other proposed anti-trans legislation, I'm here to urge you to support a trans rights sanctuary city resolution in Cleveland Heights, similar to the Safe Haven Resolution passed in May 2023 in Cincinnati. I would also push that this resolution includes other forms of discrimination, such as the right to use the bathroom and play sports. I will be focusing on gender-affirming care for this comment because HB68 has already passed in the State House. The benefits of this care access cannot be understated. Gender-affirming care is life-saving. In a groundbreaking 2023 randomized clinical trial of trans and gender-diverse adults, researchers found a clinically significant decrease in depression and suicidality among the experimental group that was able to receive gender-affirming care right away instead of waiting for three months. For anyone diagnosed with gender dysphoria, which means they're experiencing distress and depressive symptoms, HB68 can be life-threatening. As a social worker and as a trans person myself, this is incredibly important to me. It is also, of course, a very personal topic. I was open about my gender diverse identity in high school, and that caused significant social stress in my life, both at home and at school. When I was 15, I reached a breaking point where I attempted to take my life. I felt sure that I couldn't exist in this world as my true self. I was rushed to the emergency room, was in a coma for two days, and I was admitted to the hospital for a week, one of many hospitalizations I have been through for suicidal ideation. Since fully accepting my identity and receiving the care that I desperately needed, I have not attempted suicide or been hospitalized. I would like to take a moment for you all to think about the children and youth in your life. Is there any reason that you would want them to feel like I did, to feel unsupported and unloved to the point of taking their own life? This is the reality for transgender youth in our state. This summer, I also worked at Camp Lilac, a sleepaway camp in Ohio for trans and gender diverse youth, as part of the mental health staff, and I've seen firsthand this impact. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Richard Bozick. Sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
My name is Rich Bozick. I'm at 2405 Edgehill Road in Cleveland Heights. I'm here to follow up on the Turkey Ridge piece of land that was talked about a number of council meetings ago. I'm here to let you know that there are a group of citizens that are in the process of collecting signatures to protect the Turkey Ridge land and the Turkey Ridge tree canopy. We are proposing that this piece of land be removed from the list of parcels that the city plans to develop. We also support the mayor's climate action and resiliency plan and the guidelines outlined in that document, but the Turkey Ridge land is not consistent... The proposal to do development at the Turkey Ridge land is not consistent with the city's climate action plan. It would completely eliminate the tree canopy. Once that site is destroyed, it can never be resurrected. If our city truly wants to pursue a green direction, the establishment of the Turkey Ridge as a permanent green parcel should be the first and perhaps the easiest action to be taken. It will send the right message and serve as a stepping stone to what truly could be a cutting-edge climate plan for our city. It would be a major embarrassment for our city to let this site be destroyed and then ask our residents to do their part to fight the climate crisis. We hope to work with the city to dedicate this land as parkland, to be enjoyed by everyone, and it is enjoyed by many people today as it is. As the song goes, "This land is our land. It belongs to us. It is priceless. Let's work to keep it green." Thank you.
Good evening, folks. Let's see if I can get this microphone in the right place. I know that we have some time constraints, so I will try to be brief. I was really grateful to be able to speak with the Public Health and Safety Committee a few weeks ago about various issues relating to traffic accidents in Cleveland Heights and the impact that has. I have a grand layout today, and I think I'm going to skip it in the interest of lending greater credence to other people with greater passions here. But broadly, I'd just like to put out that I'm very excited to see what comes out of the process that has been ongoing for many... My apologies, first time speaking here. Lending credence to a report that some on council have seen. I know some folks haven't had the chance to be in that committee meeting. I distributed a few copies out to the clerk of council. But I'd like to generally lend my support behind the Planning Department and the work that they're doing to build the comprehensive and equitable safety action plan and to ask council to strongly consider the outcome of that plan and allocate serious and continuing funding via the Planning Department to that process so that they can do the important work in protecting Cleveland Heights citizens and guests from the dangers of outdated and outmoded roadway design. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Austin Gilchrist. Thank you for letting me speak up here. I want to introduce myself and then also the organization I'm representing. I am the Cleveland Heights representative of Strong Towns Heights. Strong Towns is a national organization that does local advocacy for safe streets, for incremental development, smart budgeting, and many other things like third places, which is what Artful and Peace Campus has talked about already tonight. I'm also here just to kind of lend what I am kind of... Why I've been coming to meetings and different things like that is we kind of want to function as a citizen advocacy group who talks into these topics in more detail so that I can kind of bring a summary of what some citizens are bringing up that are already interested in these topics and kind of give a temperature on this stuff. So I will be around a lot more. You'll probably hear me more speak up here. This is just by introduction. But to get an idea of kind of what Strong Towns Heights has already been interested in, we are very interested in the accessory dwelling unit initiative that the Planning Committee has talked about and is doing the competition on. I am very interested in seeing the resolution around the Peace Campus because I think that is actually a principle of incremental development. I think it would be a shame to do a top-down approach by demolishing the building and doing a big developmental high-rise that is going to have tax abatement, probably, and all those things that we've seen with the other projects. I think we have a lot of capacity to do like middle development, which would be able to increase the capacity of housing in here, and that's something that we have seen over time is, you know, we might have the houses filled, but less residents per house, which means less tax dollars per household. So that is something that if we do things like ADU and incremental development, rezoning from single-family to mixed-use properties for like short, like three-floor buildings to duplexes, things like that, we can actually further spread resources. So those are just kind of the general idea of things. Again, I just want to introduce what we are and kind of the things that we are standing for and talking about already at our meetings. Thank you. Can I encourage you meet the second Saturday of every month at the Cedarly Library.
Drew Hertz, Bradford Drive, Cleveland Heights. Counselors, Mr. Mayor. About the Arts Commission, I want to thank you for proving me right. I predicted retaliation, and you delivered retaliation. I could have lived without being right on that topic, but I'll take the win for what it's worth. Now, I know I'm just collateral damage in your vendetta against the mayor, and a few more bodies along the way are not going to stop you. Mayor Sarin is much nobler than I am. He continually extends an olive branch to the council, as was seen here tonight. But if you think that means he's going to back down when it comes to questions of ethics and good governance, you are mistaken. Likewise, somebody like Councilor Maddox, if you think he's going to take his hand off the plow when it comes to speaking truth to power or calling out corruption and cronyism, you don't know him. He is a lion, and you will never muzzle him. You and your followers are doing everything you can to smear the reputations of these two faithful public servants, but you will never break their spirits or extinguish their voices. Now, I want to tell you a little bit about what it means to be collateral damage. I suffer from chronic depression. It's made my life very hard. There are days when I don't know why I go on. One thing that keeps me going on, a lifeline I hang on to, is the thought that even with a disability, I can still be part of my community. I can still make a difference. I still have something to offer to the world. Everybody needs to feel welcome, to feel that they belong, to feel that they are of value. People living with disabilities feel this need very strongly because we don't get many opportunities to do that. So when something comes along like the Arts Commission, I go for it. And I thought this was a safe thing. I thought I was safe in extending myself this way. Besides my qualifications, I knew I brought a very personal experience of the healing power of art and a very intense interest in bringing disability justice to the conversation. I was wrong about it being safe. As the process unfolded, I realized that I had underestimated your vengefulness and overestimated your sense of decency and fair play. So I became collateral damage. I don't often out myself about living with mental illness, and Harley and I did not plan this. Decades ago, when I was in high school, I also contemplated suicide because the world was not safe for a gay young man like myself. This shows how little progress we have made in 50, 60 years. And I also know that the stigma that is associated with mental illness keeps so many of us silent and isolated and afraid, and that has to stop. We lack funding, we lack coverage, we lack visibility. I'm so glad Harley also spoke about there are struggles with mental health kind of thing because we need to have more of these conversations. So I wanted to put that out there because this is what you have done. At the end of the day, you have made the city less safe for people to participate, and you have made life harder for a person living with disabilities. What possible satisfaction could you get out of that?
That's all, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Again, thank you so much, all of you, for the comments and very interesting discussion. We're going to move to legislation, and I'm sure some of us are going to be making some remarks after the legislation is read, so if you want to stick around for that, please do. These next pieces of legislation are consideration for adoption. First reading.
I have Resolution Number 176-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to submit a joint application with the City of East Cleveland to the Northeast Ohio Area-Wide Coordinating Agency for a grant under the Transportation for Liveable Communities Initiative Implementation Grant Program to fund Phase Two of the Taylor Road Corridor road reconfiguration and to accept and enter into any agreements related to the grant program and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 177-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with American Builders and Applicators LLC, a certified lead abatement contractor, for the use of LeadSafe Cuyahoga Grant Funds in connection with the abatement of lead-based paint hazards at 989 Oxford Road, a 12-unit apartment building, providing compensation therefore and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 178-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Omega Brother LLC, a certified lead abatement contractor, for the use of LeadSafe Cuyahoga Grant Funds in connection with the abatement of lead-based paint hazards at 1681 and 1683 Lee Road, a two-unit house, providing compensation therefore and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 179-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with American Builders and Applicators LLC, a certified lead abatement contractor, for the use of LeadSafe Cuyahoga Grant Funds in connection with the abatement of lead-based paint hazards at 2201 North Taylor Road, a six-unit mixed-use building, providing compensation therefore and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 180-2024 on first reading. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to an agreement with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health that funds lead remediation work on residential properties for the purpose of extending the term of said agreement and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. Second. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I have Resolution Number 181-2024 on first reading. A resolution encouraging Heights libraries to work toward a solution that transfers ownership to the Peace Campus building at 2843 Washington Boulevard, Cleveland Heights, Ohio, to Coventry Peace Inc. and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Councilmembers Cobb, Petrus, Maddox, Larson, and Posh.
All right, so we decided in committee, the whole, that we are going to just leave this as first reading today and have further discussion. So go ahead to the next.
Next, I have Resolution Number 182-2024 on first reading. A resolution providing for a contribution of up to $4,000 in support of the 2024 Cleveland Heights Happy 5K, 10K, and Fund Run and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Councilmember Maddox, Councilmember Larson, Petrus, and Councilmember Posh.
Sir President? Like to, motion to amend by providing that the city's contribution be increased to an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Is that a second? Councilman Maddox? Okay. And is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment passes. Go ahead. Pardon me?
I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this because I am a member of the Special Improvement District for the Cedarly area, and that is who's going to get reimbursed for this party. Even though the funds that are all raised go to the city's scholarship fund, I just discussed it with the law director and thought it best that I recuse myself.
Okay, very good. And now we'll vote on the...
I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Oh, for the legislation, yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion. I'll make the motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended resolution passes.
If we could show me as a recusal on that as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we're on first readings only.
I have Ordinance Number 183-2024 on first reading and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement letter with the law firm Singer, Mills, Desberg, and Conns to provide legal counsel for Councilmember James Posh and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Councilmember Posh.
All right, and now we have the consent agenda.
All right, I have Resolution Number 184-2024 on first reading. A resolution recognizing October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13th, 2024, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 18th, 2024, as National Momography Day, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin. I have Resolution Number 185-2024 on first reading. A resolution recognizing October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by Mayor Sarin. And finally, I have Resolution Number 186-2024 on first reading. A resolution recognizing October 11th, 2024, as National Coming Out Day and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure introduced by President Kuta, Vice President Russell, Councilmembers Cobb, Maddox, Larson, Petrus, and Posh.
All right, do I have a motion to spend the rolls?
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now a motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have committee reports. Who would like to go first? Councilman Petrus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Housing and Building Committee met at 4:30 PM today. During this meeting, we discussed a number of very important topics, including the partial collapses in the Cedar Fairmount neighborhood and on Mayfield. We're joined by Mr. Eric Elmy, the city's chief building official, and Mr. Isaac Lewin, the founder of IA Lewin PE and Associates, a structural and civil engineering firm. We look forward to the administration introducing legislation soon regarding structural inspections. We were also joined by the Legal Aid Society, which has been helping our committee to compile tenant and landlord rights and responsibilities here in Cleveland Heights. And finally, we continued our work on housing relay recommendations from the Racial Justice Task Force. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Larson?
Thank you. The next meeting in the Finance Committee is September 23rd at 5:00 PM. The committee will be discussing the scope of work for data analysis of current lender activity for underserved neighborhoods in Cleveland Heights. This is coming out of a recommendation from the Racial Justice Task Force. The next Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting is October 21st at 10:00 AM. Thank you.
Welcome. Cobb?
Yes. Right now on the agenda, I have an Administrative Services Committee meeting scheduled for the last Monday of this month. I'm not sure whether that meeting is going to go forward or not. I'll make a decision by next week. We have two vacancies on our Commission on Aging. We'll get that posted on the city's website with a link to apply to that if you're interested. And we have three vacancies plus a position for an alternate on our Fair Practices Board. We have received some applications. I don't know if that's still continually be posted on our website or not, but we're still taking applications for that. And then next Monday, although we are holding this as a committee of the whole meeting, we will be interviewing, if we can get time spent down for the mayor's, a couple of the mayor's appointees to our Community Improvement Corporation, and also our LeadSafe Advisory Board. So that's scheduled for next Monday at 4:00. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice President Russell?
And I just want to add to Councilman Cobb's report. There are openings for the Youth Advisory Commission. I believe that's still, that's open, correct? Yes. So we are looking for the youth to apply for the Youth Advisory Commission.
Could you give us the age range for that, please?
Oh, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry.
I want to say 15 to 23, of course.
I believe it's 15 to 23.
Oh, okay.
Also, I just want to remind people that I'm planning for a dog park public hearing mid-November. Dr. Scott has asked that anyone who has any concern around environmental conditions around a dog park, please email Addy so that Dr. Scott can answer your questions directly and be precise on the information he gives you. So that would be mid-November. We have some, I've been talking with other cities who, people have told me they love their dog parks, and they will be coming in to present as well. So it should be a very fascinating public hearing.
Okay. Any other committee reports? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to old business. New business. Council comments. Okay, there we go.
Rare for me to have any council member comments. So I understand that last week, the attorney representing the city in the investigation against council for violating the sunshine laws, and also the attorney representing for the council members that have been accused of violating the sunshine laws, met. And tonight, as you heard, Member Posh, who is not one of the council members being investigated, but because all of us received letters from the law firm that the attorney, that the city has retained, asking us to provide documents, and it's got some other legal matters in it, and I'm the only attorney on city council, so for now, I'm not seeking to hire a lawyer. But the point of this is, this is going to get expensive because the city has a lawyer and can spend up to $50,000 to do that. At this point, the lawyer that has been representing the council members has been doing it pro bono. I suspect that's going to change. I'm just encouraging those lawyers and the parties that met last week to get together and resolve this matter as soon as possible before we have to vote on Member Posh's application for attorney fees, as well as the other council members. And it would be my suggestion that part of this settlement include, we'll bring someone in from the Attorney General's Office to give us a seminar on the sunshine laws, and educate not only the council members, but all of our board members and commissions and the public, and be available to answer questions. That all of us will take a public pledge that we're not going to violate the sunshine law, and we'll move forward with the pending legislation that the mayor has introduced concerning the use of your private emails to conduct city business. I think if the end game is to have a better government, then let's resolve this thing sooner rather than later. And I would just urge the parties to do what they can to resolve this thing before we have to spend money on attorney fees and distract from the city's business any further. The other thing that I, and I'm sorry I'm talking long, certainly in supporting the resolution on the Coventry Peace Building, it's not my intention to, and I don't think it's any of our intention, to tell the library board of what to do. Our intention was to show our support for the art community, and since we have a number of the library board members here, this was done with some urgency because we heard that at your next meeting, you were likely going to vote to demolish the building, which I believe is something that the majority of residents of the city does not want. To the extent that there was some impression from the library board that council was not interested in meeting, I think we would love to do that, and I would suggest that we have a joint meeting. And Ms. McPherson has offered her services, and maybe, you know, we all get together and try and come up with some resolution that saves that building as a art center. And I think that would be in the absolute best interests of the board. And so let's work for that solution because we're hearing two different stories from the folks in the building and the library board. And frankly, we're not in a position to know what the truth is, but I just know in hearing from the public, as evidenced by the speakers here tonight, that they want that building to be preserved. And I think that we have an obligation to urge the library board to do that, everything that it can do in its power to keep that building as an art center as opposed to tearing it down. That was all I have, and I'm sorry I went on. Too long.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Council Vice President?
Okay. I just would like for everyone to mark their calendars for October 10th. October 10th, I am presenting a seminar, an estate planning seminar. Most of you know I've been going through some medical issues with my mom and mental issues with my mom, and I discovered I needed some of this education, and I've decided to offer it to the public as well. So it'll be an estate planning seminar. It will be held at Cleveland Heights High School at 6:30 PM. You will actually learn about estate planning. You will learn about the difference between probate and not probate, not having to go through probate, wills versus trusts, estate planning yourself, implementing life and health insurance properly, Medicare, Medicaid with your parents, retirement, nursing homes, everything that you need to know to put together a portfolio for estate planning. You will learn in this seminar. So please mark your calendars for that date, and I will be presenting this to you every council meeting up until that time and try to get that advertising out. It will be, it's Thursday, it will be Thursday, October 10th at 6:30 PM at Cleveland Heights High School. Okay? And more information will be coming, but you will have the whole gamut on everything about estate planning. Thank you.
Councilman Maddox?
Thank you. I just wanted to again, just publicly apologize to Drew Herzic for what happened in that last council meeting. I truly believe he would have been an amazing asset to our Arts Commission, and I'm hoping in the future that both the community and this council can figure out a way to make sure that there's no collateral damage that way. It broke my heart to hear that tonight, and I didn't want to have him be overlooked again tonight. He's a major asset to this community. He has provided his services and his talents on multiple commissions and in multiple ways. And so I was very disappointed to see that he was not afforded the opportunity to serve on that commission last week because of politics, in my opinion. And so, again, I wanted to publicly apologize to him and for taking the courage to even come back here and speak again tonight. The only other thing I wanted to address is this. I know that many in the public have asked me if training would help this council in terms of any issues that we're having in terms of the sunshine laws. And I can tell you, as a certified trainer, it's what I spend my career doing in corporate, that there is a major difference between a training issue and an integrity issue. I don't think that there's anyone in this council that's confused about whether or not we should be having meetings in private and what that looks like. And if they did, they probably shouldn't have ran for council in the first place. What we need is to really have a conversation around some guardrails, accountability around this council, how we can continue to work together. And I'll continue to say this in spite of the fact that it's been ignored every time that I've stated it. This council and this leadership and attorneys can meet with the mayor all they want to, but that doesn't change the fact that I have been left out of work. I have been left out of conversations. I have been missing from tables where it's clear that conversations have happened around me. I am an elected official. You elected me to represent you, and there have been times where it's clear to me that I have not been able to do so because I've been left in the dark. So regardless of what conversations happen with this mayor and this administration, I'm going to make it clear, I will not be satisfied until this council figures out a way to work together and make sure that all of the voices on this council are heard. I don't care if they have a meeting with the mayor every hour, until they are going to sit down at a table with their colleagues and figure out how we can move together and adjust and discuss any of these trust issues that we're having, it's going to be useless. The mayor could drop everything he's doing. I could pick up and call any one of my attorneys and sue this council, sue this city, and bring us back into the situation. That's not going to solve a thing. What will solve a thing is making sure that the work this council does happens in the light of day, and to make sure that all the voices on this council are heard and represented, and to make sure that we are following the laws that we all know we should be following. And that conversations aren't going to solve that. What'll solve that will be us standing together and doing what's right. And so, again, this is not a training issue. I'm 42 years old, and I've been doing this my whole life. I've been in public service since I was 13, working for this city. No one has to tell me that I should be meeting with my colleagues in private and working out of my private emails. That's not something that someone should have to tell me at this age in my life. And so, again, this is not a training issue. This is an integrity issue, in my opinion. And so that's why I want to see this investigation through. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Go ahead, Councilman Posh.
I'd like to thank Councilman Kuta for his statements regarding the investigation and stopping the investigation so we don't have to spend any more legal money on this. I mean, if you look at the facts that have been presented, the ones that have been on Facebook, you'll realize that there's no violation. But, you know, the issue here is, hopefully, good lawyers are working through this, and hopefully, we won't have to hire additional lawyers. I would also like to thank the members of the community and this council for our community of a whole meeting regarding the Coventry Peace Campus, and getting together, agreeing to get together with the library, agreeing to get together with stakeholders to see where our role is in this process. There's nothing more than I would like to see, I think we would all like to see, a standing building that's an anchor on Coventry that supports the art, that supports the arts. I mean, the issue is, how do you fund it? How do you make it sustainable? And how do you make it work? I mean, you can't be putting Band-Aids on something, and you got to make sure we've got a certain set of expectations, and we all have to be together on the same page on this one. And I'm grateful that this council is going to work toward this end. I would also like to point out the agenda item, the council committee of a whole, where this organization, where this council was going to meet regarding how we could work together and what our expectations are for each other. We didn't have time to go over it tonight because we wanted to get here on this meeting in time, but the things that Council Member Maddox mentioned would be a perfect segue into that work that I think we all need to do. And I do believe, and I thank this council for wanting to take that on.
And thank you, Councilman, because you're definitely attempting to be a problem solver, and I appreciate that. Did you want to?
And I just want to say thank you so very much. This is something that you, that is very much long overdue. I've been talking about it several times with council, even prior to the new council, about actually, you can have retreats, you can have different subjects of goals and all of those things, but you can't get to the root of having or even putting together a goal until you get to the root of the actual problem. And when you get to the root of the actual problem and it all bubbles up, then you can make progress. But some of those questions, you know, people not talking to each other, sometimes you just have to ask yourself, why? Why don't some, why you're not being?
All right. So now we're down to the council president's report. First thing I want to say is thank you for all coming tonight. And every meeting, I'm always so impressed with the level of discussion, and tonight was no exception. To the library board members who are here, you guys have done great work. I mean, the Noble Library, the new Noble Library, is one of the most fantastic new assets to our community. And I don't ever take for granted the Lee Road Library, which is really a jewel, and it's because it's been around for a long time. I think a lot of times, we just kind of take it for granted. But there's so many great things going on there, and we have a lot of meetings there. And I want you to know that we respect your authority on this issue. You guys are going to be the decision-makers, and we understand, and I would even say empathize with you on how difficult it is to make some decisions. A lot of decisions that we make as public bodies are very difficult. I have spoken with Nancy Levin. She's been very forthcoming with information. I don't know that everybody on council has had the same opportunity to speak with all the people involved, but I would encourage you to do so, and we will take you up on your offer for the dialogue. And I did read your emails. All of the library trustees that sent emails, they were detailed and I think had a lot of information that we needed to hear. And the only thing I disagree with is the part about us maybe not weighing in. I have to tell you, that's where I draw the line. I mean, I've been here since 1961. I'm a musician. I've played more than 4,500 gigs in my life. I am deeply, deeply rooted in this arts community. I know many, many of the people here who are also deeply rooted in this arts community. There's no way I'm not weighing in on this. Just absolutely no way. To the Coventry Peace Campus tenants, I also admire very much your contribution to this community. I've been to many Peace Pops events. I've, I love that parade that Robin Van Leeuw does down Covent, what is it called?
Lantern.
Lantern Festival. Sorry, I forgot that. Lake Erie Hank, Reaching Heights, Artful, Shannon, Brady, Amy, Krista, all of you. Just a great group of people who have passion for the arts as most of us do in this room. I'm a regular in that building, and I have to tell you, I never thought one time, when I went in this build, when I went in the building, you know, this is really, you know, not worthwhile or any... not worthwhile or any, I mean, I always, every single interaction I've had there has always been inspiring and made me just appreciate being a Cleveland Heights resident and a member of the arts community. And I know being a landlord is hard. It's hard to be a tenant, too. But that doesn't mean this will all work out just by transferring the property. I understand that there's a lot of questions. What if we don't get new tenants? What if, you know, unanticipated repairs come even beyond what's already there? You know, will the new owners have to pay taxes? Somebody raised that. I mean, that's certainly something that needs to be, all these things need to be considered. I understand these questions need to be answered, but I am not for tearing down this building. And I'm not saying, I don't know if the board's for it. I know it's one of the considerations. I'm not for it. I'm for keeping it a vibrant arts and community center. That's what I'm for. I think a joint board, a joint meeting between the school board, the library board, University Heights, and Cleveland Heights elected officials is long overdue. But at the very least, we do need to get down to some serious dialogue. Again, respecting that it is your decision, because if anybody came here and we had a decision to make, you know, that's how, that's how the government works. So let's get that scheduled. I know we're going to try to talk about this on Monday. That's, we're working on our schedule because, and one of the reasons you don't see us, and this is the last thing I'll say, is because your meetings are at the same time our meetings are. It's not because we're not interested or, you know, just failed to show up, but let's try to find a time when we're all available. And with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.